Good evening, everybody. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Monday, January the 17th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. invocation this evening is going to be given by Pastor Eric Jarvis of the First Assembly of God. Good evening, Pastor Eric. Thanks for coming here and making some noise.
Lord, thank you for this beautiful day you've given to us. It is beautiful in that we all woke up today, our breathing, standing on our own feet, and caring about our daily tasks. We pray that you would be with us this evening as we're meeting together and working through the business of this city, lead and guide us, speak to us. Lord, we remember your goodness is to us in the morning when we wake up, at the noonday, as we go about our business, and at night, as we quiet ourselves and begin to lay down back in our beds, Lord, of remembering the good things you've done for us. So we just pray today that your kindness would be extended to all those in our city. We know there are some who are really struggling through this time, have lost loved ones and are sick and struggling through the winter, and so we pray that you would extend your mercies to them as well, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onooki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlack.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. And that takes us to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the agenda is approved as written. And next, we have some proclamations for two outstanding officers who I consider friends, and I am just sad to be doing these, but happy to be doing these. So Officers Antoine Bell and Sean Olney, if you guys would like to come on up, please. So I'll start reading one, and then Jeff will help, and then another one, and then we'll pass these proclamations out. So good evening, both of you. Thanks for being here. So the first one, we start with Antoine. How's that sound? Whereas Police Officer Antoine Bell comes to the end of nearly 27 years of meritorious service as an employee of the city of South Haven, and whereas Antoine Bell began his career with the South Haven Police Department on August the 21st, 1995, as a police officer, and during his employment, he also served as a field training officer, a member of the Van Buren County Multi-Jurisdictional Specialty Weapons and Tactics Team, and as a member of the Southwest Michigan Enforcement Team as an undercover narcotics officer, and whereas Antoine Bell is a firearms instructor for the South Haven Police Department, and...
Whereas Antoine Bell has been honored with multiple awards, including life savings awards, unit citations, good work notices, and whereas Antoine Bell has completed extensive training throughout his career, including but not limited to courses such as Public Relations and Crowd Control, Recognizing Psychiatric Disorders, Emergency Vehicle Operations, First Responder CPR/ AED Training, Bloodborne Pathogens, Hate Crime Instructor Training, Firearms and Patrol Rifle, Law Enforcement Bicycle Patrol, Diversity Training, Hazmat First Responder, Defensive Tactics Instructor Training, and De-escalation Intervention and Force Mitigation. And now, therefore, be it resolved, that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize Officer Bell for his dedication and efforts to providing accurate professional service to the city of South Haven. And it's signed Mayor Scott Smith, City of South Haven, presented on this day, 17th day of January, 2022.
Nice. There's still more coming. All right, and Sean, also up here. Yay. All right. Whereas Police Officer Sean Olney comes to the end of nearly 25 years of meritorious service as an employee of the city of South Haven, and whereas Sean Olney began her career with the South Haven Police Department on April the 15th, 1997, as a seasonal police officer, and on February the 12th, oh, sorry, February the 2nd, 1998, she was hired as a full-time police officer, and whereas from February 2003 until February 2006, Sean Olney served as the South Haven Police Department's Community Service Officer, and...
Whereas Sean Olney has been honored with multiple awards, including life-saving awards, unit citations, good works notices, and whereas Sean Olney has completed extensive training throughout her career, including but not limited to courses such as First Responder CPR/ AED, Bloodborne Pathogens, Basic Life Support Instructor, Ethics and Integrity, Child Passenger Safety Technician, Hate Crime Training, Firearms, Female Enforcers, Diversity Training, and De-escalation Intervention and Force Mitigation. And whereas Sean Olney has dedicated herself to the children of South Haven by organizing the annual Shop with a Cop event, by serving on South Haven Public Schools Board of Education, by volunteering with our town players, and by previously serving as a school resource officer. And now, therefore, be it resolved, that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize Officer Olney for her dedication and efforts to provide accurate professional service to the city of South Haven, signed by the Mayor Scott Smith, City of South Haven, presented on this day.
I know we're going to take pictures. If you guys want to say anything too, we'll do pictures. Anything you guys want, you know, speech, you know? Come on up. Everyone gets to come behind. I'll forgive you. Sit down.
I would just like to say it's been a pleasure serving for the city of South Haven for almost 27 years. I've just been outstanding. I can't say enough. Thank you for every day. You're great.
Thank you, Beau.
Thank you.
Now, I have to confess, I've been ribbing both of them about quitting too, as they're back there, so I will miss them as they're sneaking out of here. Antoine, can I share that, you know, well, both of you, our students, I just love the two of you, and they are so comfortable approaching the two of you. And I think we have educators that would back that up. So to our younger officers, you know, obviously something to aspire to, but you've just been so approachable forever. I mean, just, you know, it's just a gift that the two of you have, so I appreciate it. And my boys still remember you trying to give them square dancing lessons. I'll just say, so that's a whole other story. So, thank you. Appreciate it. You're amazing. So, thank you both. Sad, but happy. Okay, next, we're going to get a presentation from the Safe Harbor Children's Advocacy Center, the executor, sorry, Executive Director, Lori, uh-oh, Ann Kobyak?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a little intimidating, but it's easier than what you think.
Oh, it's great. Welcome. And we're glad you're here and interested to hear what you have to tell us.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. It's very fitting that we're here on the night of honoring some law enforcement, since we work very closely with law enforcement throughout Alleghan and Van Buren Counties. So Safe Harbor does a number of things to really work to prevent child sexual abuse and physical abuse, and then for those children that have unfortunately been involved in either sexual or severe physical abuse, we are there for them to be that safe place to talk about what has happened and then to get treatment. So we are currently in the South Haven schools, teaching children about safe and unsafe touch, and what to do if they have received an unsafe touch, and how to identify a safe adult to tell about that unsafe touch. It's really, it talks, it's about body safety, preventing sexual abuse, physical abuse, and also to hopefully prevent bullying. We also talk about online safety with kids because we know how prevalent it is for kids to be online and then to be approached by perpetrators through a lot of different methods and a lot of their apps that the kids really like to use. So we talk to them about how to keep their privacy, their information safe, and to make sure that they're talking to adults about their activity online. Once a child has made either a disclosure or there is an allegation of sexual or severe physical abuse, that allegation is brought to the attention of law enforcement or child protective services. They then call Safe Harbor, and we arrange for them to come to our child-friendly, very neutral environment, so it doesn't look like a police station and it doesn't look like CPS. And we have staff trained specifically to talk to children in open-ended, non-leading questions, to ask for a narrative from a child about why they are there at Safe Harbor, and what brings them there, what allegations or what disclosures have been made, and to get the information that law enforcement, CPS, need. Without Children's Advocacy Centers, children often have to go through separate investigations. So first, they'll talk to law enforcement, and then to CPS, and then sometimes a prosecutor. Usually at a minimum, a child must tell about their abuse five times before they go to court if there's not Children's Advocacy Center like Safe Harbor. So we work to help to minimize the revictimization of children. Then after a child has made a disclosure, we talk with the non-offending caregiver, explain to them the next steps and the processes, and we offer our therapy and our body safety medical exams. So we offer trauma-focused therapy for any child that has come through our center, and then our body safety medical exams are done through a contract with Helen DeVos Children's Hospital, where we work with a child abuse pediatrician. There are only about four or five of those in the state of Michigan, and we have access to one by bringing them to our center in Alleghan. Everything we do for kids and for their families is completely for free. They never receive a bill. We also operate the Court Appointed Special Advocacy Program. That is where we train volunteers to speak on behalf of children in the court system, where children are removed from their homes due to any sort of abuse. Typically, that is going to be a substance abuse issue or a very dirty home where the kids are removed. The advocate meets with the child once a week. CPS and the attorney assigned to the child are only required to make some sort of contact every month or every 90 days. But our volunteers are there once a week for an hour, getting to know those children, their needs and their interests, so that at every court hearing, those volunteers are able to testify and advocate for the kids based on each individual child's best interest. If there are five kids, eight kids involved in a case, we advocate for each individual child, knowing that every child has different needs and different interests. All of our services are completely for free for the communities. We're free to the schools when we go in and train the kids. We also train the adults and train the schools, the school personnel's about their responsibility for how to recognize and properly respond and report child abuse and neglect. We currently serve both Alleghan and Van Buren County, sorry, Alleghan and Berry County, and we are working to set up a satellite center for Van Buren County. We've been talking to the county commissioners, and all of those that need to be required, the prosecutor, law enforcement, and CPS are all on board for us, hopefully opening a center in Van Buren within a net short, one to two years, hopefully, depending on funding. One of the other projects that we are working on, because we serve over 325 children each year currently in Alleghan and Van Buren County, just for the Children's Advocacy Center program, is that we need to build a new building. We currently operate at about 2,400 square feet. We have nine staff members, and when one family comes with law enforcement, CPS, the prosecutor, it gets very full. So we are working to build, go from 2,400 square feet to 6,000 square feet. We currently have raised about 1.1 million, and we are hoping to raise a total of 1.8 that will completely furnish and build a new building on a piece of property that we purchased for a dollar from the city of Alleghan. Most importantly, I want you to understand that our services that we provide to the kids are in high need. As I said, we serve over 325 children in Alleghan and Berry County. That's 325 new children each year. We reach about 4,000 children with our prevention message, and we work to at least train 100 mandated reporters each year. It takes a lot for us to provide these services to the kids, but it is a very important need. Currently, we serve about 20 children in this community alone each year through the Children's Advocacy Center program. I brought along with me our Board Treasurer, who is also a resident of the city of South Haven, just for you to understand that we serve the entire communities. Do you have any questions for me?
I know, I had an email or two just to clarify. So you said about 20 students in the South Haven area right now?
Through the Children's Advocacy Center Program.
Through that center portion, okay.
We are in all of the South Haven Elementary Schools and providing the body safety message.
Okay, perfect. And then, this is in Alleghan, is there, I mean, what is, is there an access, is there transportation options, or just access to that's often a challenge for folks?
There's absolutely a challenge, and that's why we really want to add a satellite center to serve children in Van Buren County. That satellite will probably be in the Hartford area, but there is transportation issues. Law enforcement or CPS tend to help us transport families to our centers if there is no other way.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions in this group?
Are there any requirements to become a volunteer, one of the court-appointed advocates?
There are. You must be 21 years of age and free of any criminal history or central registry, child abuse and neglect history. That must be completely empty, or they can't have anything on the record. And then really just make a commitment to serve at least one year, because our cases typically go from anywhere from six months to four years. And we really try to make sure that once a volunteer is assigned to a case, that they stay on that case until the child reaches permanency. And again, that can be three months, which is the shortest we've ever seen. Generally, they're about two years to finish a case.
Okay, sounds good. I don't think you have any questions, so...
May I leave some brochures?
Absolutely.
That talks a little bit about Safe Harbor, who we are, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out, but want you to know the services that we provide to the kids in your community.
Well, thank you very much for doing what you do.
Thank you.
It's very much needed, so thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. And that takes us to the Consent Agenda Items A through G.
I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through G.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, please.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onooki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlack.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to new business. First City Council will be asked to receive the 2021 Planning Commission Annual Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that Griffin will be walking us through what the Planning Commission Annual Report is, but as you can see, we've done a number of actions, and this is that time of year when we do report on what activities have occurred in the Planning Commission over the 2021 year, as well as the zoning board of appeals. Griffin?
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity. I will keep this relatively short for us this evening, but what you have before you is the annual report, reporting on both the Planning Commission and the ZBA's actions for the 2021 year. An annual written report is required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act to be presented to the legislative body annually. The way the city of South Haven has done their report for the last couple of years is to provide a short overview of the activities that the Building Department conducts on a day-to-day basis, as well as a meeting-by-meeting breakdown of what agenda items, topics, and actions occurred. I'll spare us all from working through each one of those, but as you can see from the report that's in the packet, the Planning Commission in particular had a really busy year in 2021, and I think staff's very appreciative of all the work of those people who give all of their time on that board to serve the community. And the only other point I'll really draw to all of your attention, unless there are any specific questions that I can help with, is one of the things that staff tries to do in this report as well is do a little bit of looking ahead, do some anticipated projects or topics that I think our community and our boards and commissions and City Council can look forward to in 2022. So there you'll see things like advancing housing projects, local business expansion projects, and waterfront development. So these are some things that we're anticipating some additional action on in the 2022 calendar year. But with that, I'm happy to do the best I can to answer any questions, and just really want to acknowledge the hard work of the volunteers on the Planning Commission and the ZBA, because those are some heavy asks, and they get some really challenging topics put before them, and I don't think we could do what we do without all of their time.
I would agree. And thanks, George, for sitting on that for us. Appreciate that. Questions? Lots of good work. Okay, that was easy. Any public questions or comments on that report? All's quiet. Come on up. Just state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Dorothy Lockwood, 747 Lee Street. I was wondering, on the Planning Commission, why road repairs wasn't a top priority on that in 2022? South Haven roads are in terrible shape, and I think that's something that should be a priority. A lot of us live here year-round, and a lot of us deserve better roads and streets to live on, drive on, bicycle on, and I'd just like to say that that should have been part of the main thing that should be addressed in 2022. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thanks, yeah. And that's one of, I mean, I'll just address part of that, but infrastructure, roads, has been high upon City Council, as we do have a road millage, and one thing we'll be discussing this year, I hope, as I will be twisting this group's arm, to talk about making our current 20-year-old millage become permanent. So I agree, roads are important. So any other questions or comments? And if not...
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I thank you for providing the opportunity to make public comment. I did have a concern with the way one of the items was represented in the chart for the Planning Commission with regard to the July 8th meeting. Per the written submission I had provided last week, it was clear from the minutes from that meeting that the application was not complete for the Trailside PUD Amendment, but despite that, and regardless of the fact that the zoning administrator has given some discretion for continuing to set the meeting when there are unnecessary items, but in this situation, there were actually necessary items per the minutes of July 8th that have been approved. And so, yes, they had a very, very busy year. They got through a lot of material, but I would like to get support for not setting meetings or noticing out public hearings before the Planning Commission, and the record correctly reflecting that when there are necessary items, that that public notice is not sent. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? And if not, all right. So really, we just need a recommendation. I'll look for a motion and to accept this report.
I make a motion to accept the 2021 Planning Commission Annual Report.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second. All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it is accepted. And next, City Council will be asked to receive the 2022 Short Term Rental Snapshot Report. And who's got this one?
Sure, I'll go ahead, Mayor. This is the time of year that we have to provide our snapshot report, which is, there's three items that we must provide, a map showing all parcels within the city containing dwelling units, and all parcels within the city with one or more dwelling units registered as a short-term rental business. We also have to show the count of the total number of rental dwelling units and the total number of short-term rental business units within the city, and just a statement of the maximum number of dwelling units that can be registered as new short-term rental businesses. This report does all three of those. In addition, I'm going to have Griffin kind of walk this through, but we have the same kind of map template that we've used year over year, and we've plugged in these numbers as we've looked at the snapshot for this report. So Griffin, if you want to walk through those numbers?
Sure, I'm happy to. Again, I'll try to be relatively brief, and then if there are questions or there's any specific items that council would like to go into more detail on, city staff will be happy to do that. But just starting kind of on the next page, the first document before you all is your general statistics related to short-term rentals during the 2021 calendar year. As in the past, we break down a number of statistical areas that short-term rentals are clustered to try to show any patterns that may be able to be viewed. One thing to acknowledge for this year is I know there's been some questions or concerns about some of the exempt PUDs, so we made sure to specifically pull out those areas so that they can be acknowledged kind of on their own, if you will. But you'll see the map of registered short-term rentals following after that. There was not a lot of change in regard to the order of largest concentration to least concentration from previous years, but again, nonetheless, they are listed there in order, and a map is included. Then goes into some more general statistics that you will see, going in between bedroom breakdown and then short-term rental inspections, and some things that our inspectors look for when they do those annual inspections. And we'll also highlight when it comes to the infraction section, a couple different methods that city staff uses to find and identify unregistered or short-term rentals operating in violation of the ordinance, and I will acknowledge that this year, two civil infractions were issued. My understanding is that infractions, or civil infractions, had not been issued in the past, so that is a difference from this year. Moving on to the next page, you'll see what we call more as the Snapshot Report. This is the report that really focuses on the data that is called for in the ordinance. What it does is breaks down the short-term rental business designation units and how city staff come to the number of allowed, non-exempt business units, and how many are still available for the 2022 year. So specifically for 2022, there are 127 remaining certificates for non-exempt business units. You'll see kind of the breakdown in the table. I will say, the wording in page 69 of the packet, that is just a worded version of the table that you can see on page 70. We then move on to a table showing over time the number of non-exempt business units in the city, beginning in 2019, when the city started to track this data, all the way through the beginning of this year. You'll see the same map that was included in the other report, and then a new map that I would really like to highlight and give our GIS department a lot of credit for working on and putting together. Over the last year, there's been a number of questions about where are new housing units being developed in the city, and how many of those housing units are being developed in the city. And we're working on that. 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 units being developed in the city, and how many of those housing units are short-term rentals? And really, what you can see from this map is the distribution of those, the concentration in those exempt PUDs, and a little bit more information, kind of breaking down where those are in terms of how short-term rentals may be impacting some of the more traditional neighborhoods in South Haven. But with that, like I mentioned, I think city staff will do the best we can to answer any questions, but we're happy to put this data out there as we do annually, and we'll continue to do the best we can in terms of administering and enforcing this ordinance.
Sounds good. It's a lot of good data, and a good thanks to Orion and everybody over at GIS to make this possible. Council questions, comments? Lot of data to digest.
I really appreciate this data and find it really interesting. I'm just wondering if there's some point where we could also include the impact on the neighborhoods from a more quantitative standpoint as well.
Okay. This report is required by the ordinance and kind of explains the number of units that would be allowed per year. So if all the units were rented out, and right now it's setting that for the 2022 year, there will be 127 permits that would be available, and this is for the non-exempt business permit. And this is for the business units that would operate in your typical neighborhoods, not the exempted PUDs that were exempted out in 2018 ordinance. But this would be for new business permits that are, that count towards the cap. I do know that when we go into priority setting, I do understand that there's a number of council members that may want to continue to have housing as a high priority and to look at the impacts of this ordinance, and that might be something we can discuss at that time.
Awesome. Thank you.
I should also add, we typically will be adding the revenue portion to this, showing where the short-term rental inspection program revenues are going, as this is a component of the general fund. I'll be bringing that in February. So that will show our trends over time. If there's any monies to make up, any losses, I'll be explaining that at that time. And I did want to kind of point out, if you're looking at this report, specifically the graphs that GIS put together on page 70, that shows our math, if you will, how we got to the 127 and the units that are exempted out, so we got to that number. And also, if you can show this on our screen here, is that it shows the trend of the non-exempt business units, short-term, and the number prints over time since 19. So you'll see a dipping down that went down to 2020, where you saw a lot of people unable to rent and use their homes, and you also saw a lot of people maybe not wanting to have those, you know, rental permits at that time. But as you can also look up, we've seen like a gradual increasing going back up, but we're not nearly at the numbers for the non-exempt business short-term rentals that we were in 2019.
Go ahead, Joe.
First, I want to thank staff for putting all this information together. I think it's helpful, not only for us, but I think for the residents. The big question that it doesn't address, in my opinion, is what is acceptable to the residents of this city? And I'm thinking not only in absolute numbers, but in density. It's one thing to have five houses in five blocks. It's another thing to have five houses in one block. And I think at some point, the city owes it to the residents of this town, and I'm talking about the voting residents, to know what they think about short-term rentals. Is there too many? Is there not enough? Are they happy with it? Are they not happy with it? Those questions, we still don't know. It seems like the city does a good job questioning residents about other issues, but this is one of the biggest ones facing this community, and we really don't know. I can give you all the hearsay you want, but I don't know factually what the residents think about the number of short-term rentals in the town, and I'd like to see something done about that.
Yeah, I would agree. I think maybe this during priority setting, it'd be interesting to have a discussion about a survey of some sort. There's a few topics. It'd be nice to get some citizen input on, so I would agree. Any other questions, comments of this body? George, go ahead.
I don't know if Kate or Griffin, you can answer this, but on the graph on page 70, where it talks about where it shows the trend, and it looks like in May of 2019, we were at 478, and then we reached a low point in September of 2020 of 293. Any ideas on why we saw a drop from like mid-2020 down towards September of 2020?
I think we can hypothesize like several reasons. I think the most notable would more than likely be COVID. I know COVID prevented a lot of renewals and inspections and so on and so forth, so, you know, can we say for certain that that impacted the entire change? No, we can't, but I think we can pretty reasonably hypothesize that COVID and the public health situation in early 2020 really impacted the number of renewals and the number of rentals going through the certification process.
I would add that we heard anecdotally that there was a number of people who may have had a business permit and would rent out intermittently, but decided that because of the COVID restrictions, or just didn't want people in their house with, you know, just having their houses exposed, that's why you see, I think, such a strong drop-off in that period of 2020. Now, the gradual decline, I think, is due to the restrictions in the inspection program and the relicensing fee, if you will, the permit fee, which right now is set at $500 annually for business permits, but $100 biannually for personal permits. So we even implemented this inspection program, so annually, houses are being inspected. And as noted in here, I think it's a little over 50% past the first time, and usually they're with the professionally managed companies, but we're still seeing people or homes that have to be routinely re-inspected to get that certification.
Thank you.
Are there any public questions or comments on the report? And if so, just come on up, state your name and address.
John Lorsdorf, 23, Delaware Court. And thank you for getting that information out to us. I second what Commissioner Reeser suggested, which is, you know, when this thing was adopted, they talked about reviewing it after a few years, and I think maybe the time has come with the different reports, that it would be a good time to have a hearing either with the Planning Commission or the city council to see what the residents think about it. And particularly, I'm concerned about the density and the 1 to 4 ratio. I think this is something that needs another review, since statistically, South Haven has the greatest number of rentals of anybody on Lake Michigan. And also, to look at some of the ordinances to see how some of the other communities have dealt with the short-term rentals. I mean, if you go up to Sagatuck, which has only 2,200 people, they only have 185 rentals. St. Joe has 43 rentals. They have a population of 8,000. And so when you start looking at our other cities, the ratio that we have is far and above greater than almost any resort town in western Michigan. So I think it deserves another look, because I think the ratio is just too high. Living where I do on Delaware now, the, as you know, that the Indian section, the Apache, Beaver, and Chippewa on Delaware, we don't have any short-term rentals. And my house is going to be 60 years old, and there's houses older than that. We've never had short-term rentals. But we now have a house across the street from me that's up for sale, which could easily be turned in to a rental of 12 people. And part of our zoning, residential zoning, is the character of the neighborhood, and we've already seen that. If you only have two or three living in a house, and you have next door to you now 12 people or 16 coming in, it changes the whole character of your neighborhood. And as you know, statistically, 40% of the housing here has married couples in it. 36% only one person. So 75% of our housing only has one or two people living in it. The average family size is less than three. And in our street, we only have one family that has three people in it. All the rest are one or two. So when you plop in 12 people, you're changing the character of the neighborhood, and that's one of the concerns that we have, to keep the character. If you're going to have rentals, maybe have a different ratio of where they can be. Some cities have, you can only be so many houses a way to have a rental, or so many feet, rather than have them all together. And you already have sections like Maple Gate, that can be all rental. That's fine. You have Trailside, that's becoming all rental, but that's not all mixed up in your other single-family neighborhoods. So I'd appreciate the city taking a new look at that, but most importantly, getting input now after all these years, what do the residents that live here think about it? And how do they feel the impact is? It certainly has affected, as you know, affordable housing. So kudos to getting the report out. I certainly would like to see more public input, but in particular, I would like to see a review of the ratio and the density that's in that ordinance. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your comments. Anybody else?
Dorothy Lockwood, 747 Lee Street. You mentioned, Graham, or Griffin, that there was two citations for short-term rentals. I was wondering, how were those identified? I mean, how was that? I mean, if there was two, how'd you pick? Not you. How were two picked out of the whole city? Were there complaints, or was it? I mean, how does?
Yes, our enforcement processes are largely complaint-driven. I believe one of them was identified by our code enforcement staff here in City Hall, and another one was identified by the police department.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Tuttle, 116 Clinton. I appreciate the staff putting this together. It's a wealth of information here, and I think you've already commented on some of it. I'd like to make a couple of points. The regulations surrounding this that were put together in 2016 specifically called for balancing the needs of our residents with the transit community, tourists, and all of that. And I think that's a very important thing. We're a tourist community, and it's very important to have capacity for the tourists in our area. I think we've already heard a little bit about some of the issues of the residents and the guests that are there, and how there can be potential conflict, and don't need to spend a whole lot of time talking about that. What I would like to point out, though, is that while this report has a lot of very, very good information, there's another level of detail that we're probably not seeing, and it can be misled here. When I look at it specifically here, I'm in the southwest downtown area there by St. Basil's, and we've got, the report says that we've got 184 rentals out of the 763, and the report identifies that as being 24%. Obviously, that's different than the 1 for 4 ratio that's desirable. We've already exceeded it. Let me step down to a further level of detail. I did a survey of my local community there. My block has approximately 47% rentals there, that we have eight out of 17 residences are short-term rentals. Across the street from me, there are seven out of 15, another 46% there. Without pointing out any more specifically, if I point to another adjacent block, then that's potentially closer to the lake, that actually has a 53% there. And so my point is, is that while this is very good information here, looking and saying, we've got capacity for another 129 permits based on the regulation, I'm not sure that that's necessarily desirable. And frankly, I would be very, very upset if those 129 were allocated and there was a pro-rata increase, that my block would probably be 75% rentals, if in fact, it was spread based on the way the data currently exists. And so I applaud your request to say, we need community input to find a better balance to how do we do something here that we can bring in the tourists that this community needs and balance the needs of the existing residents? Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I'm here again to talk about STRs. Joe, I thank you for bringing that up, because, you know, Trailside is not subject to the PUD. It's a PUD that got exempted. And so we can have 20 rentals in phase one if we want. Right now, the thing got updated, because one of my neighbors just started renting his house, their house. We have seven out of 17 right now, and number 20 is not going to be rented, but that doesn't mean 17, 18, 19 can't be rented. Right now, we can have either 35% or 50% of Trailside 1 as STRs, depending on what happens to lots 17 to 19. And it's, and they're not exempted from it. And Trailside 2 didn't get exempted either, because the PUD changes you guys had for the four PUDs, they can do whatever they want, have as many as they want. We're not subject to the one quarter. I've been asking council, and I've been asking planning commission, I've asked staff to change it. When they passed the ordinance in 16 or 18, they wanted to stem, you know, growth. Well, we've got tons of growth. They built the rest of the houses in Trailside all in one summer, and they're talking about building more duplexes across from me, and also nine houses on St. Joe. So the odds are, those could, all of those could be, you know, STRs. So, and your example is, on my street, there's four STRs around me. There's street two on one side, one on the other, and one across the alley. So I lucked out. I got four of them by me, and I had three instances last summer with over occupancy. And the way you're supposed to do is, you're supposed to call the city during working hours, building services, and somebody may come out and look at it, and then they'll give them a warning. They won't give them a $500 citation, they'll give them a warning. If you call an agency, the agencies do not call the city to let them know that there's been a violation. There are two rental agencies that will evict people for occupancy for other items. That's Shores and Big Blue, which is Ryan Servatius. I don't know about the other ones, but these people rent these expensive houses with four and five families, and then they try to skirt the law. Okay? We've got to do something with the STRs. And we've got to police it better. Now, the police cannot go in, if they get a complaint after hours, and walk into your house and say, hey, we think you've got 20 people staying here. They don't have a search warrant. So when these people get leases for STRs, they ought to relinquish the fact that the police can come in and ask about occupancy, because during, the only time you call the city is during working hours, and you call the not emergency police number after hours. And they can just ask you if there's 20 people staying in a 12-revency house, and they can say no, and they can't do anything about it. So we've got to take a look at the neighborhoods, and our neighborhood can be swamped again in phase two, if, you know, the city can go ahead and change that PUD exemption. They did it once, they can change it back again. Otherwise, we're going to have 100% more STRs in Trailside, and it doesn't do good for the neighborhoods. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. And Councilwoman Reeser, thank you for bringing that up. I would wholeheartedly like to get input from residents. I reiterate Dan's concerns, so, and comment with regard to violations. So my understanding is, there doesn't have to be a violation. A warning can be given the first time someone goes out. I think it needs to be changed, that if a call occurs and there is a violation, warnings no longer are allowed. A violation needs to be fined, because we need to rein this in with the lease and the request to become registered. Part of that can be allowing entrance to confirm residency, and there could be a requirement that any person who is staying there over the age of two, or two or older, has to provide their name and provide identity, so that you can compare who is there and who is not there, and then you would be able to better verify occupancy violations. With regard to fees, it's my understanding that, based on a comment from the attorney in the 2018 staff report, one of them, is that the fee does not cover the expense to the city. If that is, has been corrected, that's wonderful. If it has not been corrected, and we'll find out in February from the report, it sounds like, the fee should be set high enough that it covers the staff person who monitors this, the people who go out for inspections, the inspections we pay for, additional expenses when the people are not there and the inspection has to be rescheduled, and for, and multiple trips to correct violations before it's granted. It shouldn't be one fee fits all. It should be staggered, such that the total fee covers the expenses to the city. The tax-paying residents should not be subsidizing short-term rental expenses. We're already assaulted with them in our neighborhoods. They shouldn't be assaulting our budget. With regard to Trailside and PUDs in general, in those 2018 report, staff report, one of them said, "The reason that the PUDs were exempted is because those residents were not areas that the city wanted to protect," or something to that effect. You can all go check it out. It's one of the reports. Simultaneously and contradictory, Trailside is there to provide mixed price point, and a lot was given to that developer to provide mixed price point. As I raised in my written submission, because I could not attend the hearing at which we were allowed to give a comment, the mixed price point will not work were allowed to give a comment, the mixed price point will not work in a PUD that is exempt from STRs, because there is going to be a strong incentive to sell these to people who will rent them for short-term rental, which drives up the price, which then eviscerates the mixed price point for these townhomes in PUDs that are providing, supposed to provide, homes for our middle-income families who have been priced out of the market because of STRs. So, I beg the City Council to start listening to the residents, start protecting our budget from subsidizing luxuries, and make our neighborhoods neighborhoods again with children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seen none. Any other council questions? And if not, I just need a motion to accept the 2022 Short-Term Rental Snapshot Report.
I make a motion that we receive the 2022 Short-Term Rental Snapshot Report.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second to receive that report. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those who know, it's received. Thank you. All right, next, City Council is going to be asked to consider the formation of an ad hoc committee to review possible regulations of houseboats and floating homes in the city of South Haven. Got a motion just to get it going.
Can we start a committee?
Yep, we're just going to.
Okay. I make a motion that we form an ad hoc committee to review possible regulations of houseboats and floating homes in the city of South Haven.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second. Good job. Kate, or who's got this? You or Griffin?
Full tag team here, Mayor. So, we have before you a request that's stemming out of the Harbor Commission for the formation of an ad hoc committee that would include also the Planning Commission, at least one City Council member. This is some information that has been forwarded to city staff, and we've been working with this at the Harbor Commission level, just getting some information and some input on houseboats and floating homes. Now, I should clarify that the city has four municipal marinas, and quite simply, if it's not a boat, it doesn't get to stay at the marina. It must operate under its own power and be classified as a vessel. That's within the confines of that arrangement. But this would be looking at floating homes and floating and houseboats in the other areas of the harbor, that the harbor master would have designation over. Griffin, do you have anything to add up to that?
Sure. Again, I will try to be brief. I think city staff are just looking for some input from council tonight on whether or not this is a topic you all would like city staff to work on more. Over the past year, several individuals have brought feedback to staff, and my understanding is to some members of council, either looking to limit this practice, or who are wishing to get more guidance on how they can, they could do this here in South Haven. And across the state, there are starting to be some concerns. Sagatuck's one example of a community that started to realize, in a lot of ways, houseboats fall into a gray area in between local regulation, state regulation, and federal regulation. So, this topic was brought before the Harbor Commission, looking for some additional direction, and the feedback staff was given at that point was, this is a larger policy decision that also has some planning implications above and beyond just impacts for the local harbor. So, they suggested the potential of putting together an ad hoc committee with members of some various boards and commissions to start to review this. So, that's what's before you this evening. There is some additional information in the packet about how the city of Sagatuck looked at regulating floating homes, as well as a specific letter from a city resident pointing out some of the concerns about this practice. But again, I think this evening, city staff's really just looking for some input if this is something that city council would like us to work on more. With that, I'll do the best I can to answer any questions.
I know, I would, I'll speak in favor, because as the questions were posed, I must admit, I was kind of fascinated to hear there were kind of some gray areas there regarding, just from as simple as, you know, utilities, or, you know, infrastructure, wastewater, whatnot, just to make sure, you know, all that stuff's in order, and then as well as the ability to rent the home out or whatnot. So, just to standardize it, to make sure we're all on the same page, would make sense to me. So, I would vote in favor of looking into it.
I guess I do see this as a trend. Obviously, it's being seen in other communities. We're starting to see it here in South Haven, so I would assume get ahead of it before it gets to be a problem. My only question is, why we wouldn't have, basically direct the Planning Commission, since it looked like the end result would end up being an ordinance change? Why wouldn't go to Planning Commission? And if they feel the need to form a subcommittee out of Planning Commission, then do it that way, as opposed to having a, because what I would see this going as, is basically a, this ad hoc committee then would come up with a report, which we would then send to Planning Commission to draft up an ordinance. And I would think maybe it might be more efficient to have it go to Planning Commission, have them form whatever committee they want, which I think, including like the Harbor Commission and other stakeholders, is a great idea. But, so that's my only comment on that.
Any thoughts from staff perspectives that matter? We do it A versus B? I mean, the price accomplishes a similar thing, so.
I think because the Harbor Commission has been, you know, this just, this started there, but more importantly, harbors and regulations, there are things that the Harbor Commission does have to weigh on, so that's why, I think why we propose a joint ad hoc committee.
That's fine. That makes sense from that regard. Joe, question?
Now, I was just going to reiterate what George said, and I spoke to another person on the Planning Commission, and he made a great point, as George just did. The name itself is planning. We need to get ahead of some of these issues. It feels like, to me, the Planning Commission, and too often, City Council, is reactive rather than proactive. Let's get it, like George said, let's get ahead of it. Let them do the planning. Let them do the thought on what the future should be for this town, whether it's housing or whatever issue. Then come back to City Council and then let the residents, you know, discuss it. But we've got to start getting ahead of these issues and not playing catch-up. And I'm completely at a loss for housing on the river, or, I don't know anything about it. So, I think it's important that the Planning Commission, excuse me, does that, and any other issues that come up. Let's just get ahead of these things.
That's why it's here. So, the concept being, the ad hoc is going to allow harbor planning to accomplish that goal. So, I think that makes sense. I think I see a volunteer down to my left, knows a lot about the water. Want to take public, any public questions on this before we?
Yep.
Send it? Any public questions or comments? Think you hear what it is? All right, seen none.
We got one.
Oh, so close.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I would actually be in support of a joint, because I think that's where you're bringing the knowledge from two groups to come up with something that would then go on. It's not uncommon for a lot of proposals to come up through the Harbor Commission or other commissions up to the Planning Commission. So, I think this is a jumpstart to that process, is getting it going, and that way, you're having two heads versus one, which I think is better. With regard to specifics, I liked hearing a lot of the comments. One thing I didn't hear was parking. So, for houseboats, you're going to have to have parking someplace. And we already know, we have a significant parking issue as it is without them. So, that, I think, needs to be part and parcel with this discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? All right, we've got the motion, the second to form the ad hoc committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, get it together. Next, City Council, we ask to consider contributing a portion of the city's American Rescue Plan Act funds, aka ARPA, to the South Haven Area Water Sewer Authority, SHASA, to replace lead service, lead services, sorry, in the SHASA service area. So, how about, do we want to have a motion to consider, or you want to hear from Bill first?
Whatever you'd like to do.
Let's do, all right, I'll get him over. We'll hear from Bill, and then we'll.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. Recently, I attended a, on behalf of the South Haven Area Water Sewer Authority, I submitted a proposal for the Van Buren County ARPA Funding Committee. It's a committee that is formed to go through ARPA requests, to kind of weed out certain requests, get them at a certain size per se, or whatever they want to see, and then recommend those to go to the county board. So, this is the first step. Initially, as you could see from the attachment, I went in there asking for $2 million. The intent was to try to get 300 services replaced. The feedback received actually from the county was, more or less said, "Too much." And then, would the other governing bodies put in matching funds, matching ARPA funds towards this quest? So, what I did was, is I just put up, I lowered everything down to, what would it cost us for one year to replace services? So, we're looking at about 100 services. And I split it up, 25 percent to, SHASA's 25 percent, South Haven Township, Casco, the city. That was my first stab at it. Any amount that we could get would be greatly appreciated. It's not, this is just a starting amount. It's nothing in stone. If City Council said, "Thanks, Bill, but no thanks," I mean, that's a response as well. Just one FYI, the South Haven Township did approve, actually, to contribute 160,000 of their ARPA funds towards this. And we should be here, and I don't know from Casco, because their meeting is tonight as well. So, I'm here to answer any questions City Council may have about this process, lead and copper.
And Bill, just to refresh, this is the unfunded mandate you've been warning us about. They keep telling us to do this, and we don't have the money to do it, and this is getting rid of the old lead pipes.
Yes.
Yeah. And we got Ross Stein here, and we all talked about this, and, okay.
And this is happening in every city across the United States of America, and it is coming, and it's not going to stop. And we are going to expend the money one way or the other, so we can take a portion of this ARPA money and earmark it to this. And I could think of nothing more that will be spread out equally amongst every single resident to control rates than that. So, I would vote in favor of pushing that toward that. So, anybody else? Comments?
Can you expand just a little bit more on the warm reception you received through the county?
I would say it was a warm reception, but it was, as soon as I walked into the meeting, I seen that they already had a lot of funds earmarked for other things. And so, I kind of knew, writing on the wall, so to speak, that there wasn't a lot. I was competing. Plus, I seen what was on the agenda, that there were a lot of people requesting a lot of money. Everything that was on the agenda that day was tabled. So, it wasn't just my request, it was everybody's tabled. I felt going into there that we had a very strong application, because when I looked at just the titles without the funds associated with them, I was like, wow, I'm asking for water, safe drinking water? I got this in the bag. No. It was, it has to do with money. I mean, they made valid points. I did argue the point that our matching funds are our rates. I said that several times. That just seemed to, so, like I said, this is, this is a suggestion. I started at a point, and I started at one year, because three years looked like it was a hard pill for them to swallow. But I, that's, that was the, like I said, it was, they were very cordial, and they tried to steer me in what this meant. I can't make any guarantee, coming back to them, that this will still be, and I will keep, of course, City Council surprised.
So, we can still move forward with trying?
Yes. I plan on actually, whatever I hear from all the governing bodies is to resubmit to the county again and get more funds.
Show them what everybody else is contributing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is this, will there be tangible cost savings to the residents through using the ARPA funds for this?
Yeah, it will offset, because these funds that we're using, that we could actually use towards other assets that need repair. If you look actually in the memo, I, actually, I want to say it's probably page, page seven, we have $91 million worth of actually assets over 40 years we have to, that's in our plan. That's me summarizing the seven-year plan, the 20-year plan, vertical, horizontal. That's none, and you think of the averages, that means we should be spending $2.3 million per year towards our infrastructure to get it at a, to get it at a rate to where it's within the AWWA standards of assets and their reliability. But we're not spending that. We're nowhere near that. So, what, I guess the answer to your question is yes, because we're not spending those funds on lead services. Now, we can spend it towards what we need to.
Okay, thank you.
George, go ahead.
Bill, I'm all in favor of using the American Rescue Plan Act monies for this purpose. I think that's a good use for it. My question is around the, you know, the, you've got different government bodies contributing different amounts. Would that then limit the amount that we could use, like in the city, to just that 160,000? Or like, you already said, South Haven Township was going to, already, so would like that 160,000 they were contributing? Would that only be used for South Haven Township?
Oh, no.
Utilities? Or it all goes into a big pool, and we just use it wherever SHASA feels it needs to be used?
That was the intent of it, because to use it actually where the lead, so, majority of lead services are in the city of South Haven. We're the oldest infrastructure we have. South Haven Township, most of theirs are newer, and Casco Township, most of those copper pipes, or copper services. So, it would be a good majority here, but what we have to look is actually what county we're spending it in, because there might be a few stragglers, like up in Casco, and a few older services, plus a few older services in Township, but we've got to only spend these ARPA funds within the Van Buren County. I can't spell it in the analogy. And that would be the only stipulation. So, to answer your question, it would be where we, that asset where we start with, and we go by actually the resurfacing list that we do to try to save money on this. Any rules that we're resurfacing, or we're doing some kind of Cape Seal on, that's the services we're hitting to try to save money. Because if we weren't doing that, we'd have to have all those asphalt costs actually associated with it, which actually would raise the price up. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I would just be, like, for Casco Township, I can see maybe some pushback, saying, well, why are we contributing to the city of South Haven to get their lead pipes, you know, replaced? Which, you know, is valid, but we're all in the same water authority together, so.
It's been very good, actually, at the board level. Never had any really feedback like that from Casco or South Haven Township. All of them are really on board with the authority. And I think I spoke about this before, we don't know what the future entails, meaning right now, we're concentrating this money in the city of South Haven. 25 years from now, you could be concentrating this fund, I'm sure when originally lead services were put in, people were like, oh, there's no problem, let's put lead, we don't know what the ramifications are of copper. I mean, all of a sudden, you could have something that they discover through different analytical improvements that they do over time, where they can detect something, and oh, now we've got to focus on that. But that's a very good point, but I've seen actually from the board itself, that they've always been on board with this, and I've never heard anything at the board level.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Anybody else? All right, so how about public questions or comments, and then we'll roll on.
Dorothy Lockwood, 747 Lee Street. When you were speaking, you said that you might want to allocate some of these funds for something else. What's more important than healthy drinking water?
No, that's what they would be, that's only what they would be used for.
And the part of our tax money that goes to that, and our utilities that go every month, and then tax bills that are coming up next month? What part of that isn't urgent to take care of all of this? I mean, it's a high priority. I think it should be at the top of the list. I mean, I'm not sure, I guess my question is, I don't feel like it's a high priority. I feel like it's, they make us do it. I mean, you just said that we have the oldest infrastructure. Why is that? Why hasn't it been a high priority to update our facilities before it's mandated?
I think part of what you misunderstood, he was saying, we're older as compared to the outlying areas where there's newer homes being built. If you look at a lot of cities. the outlying areas where there's newer homes being built. If you look at a lot of cities across the nation, this is not new. The older cities, I mean, you're 75, 100 years old, so the pipes are, they're all coming of age about the same time. So hence, this nationwide effort to go back and go, oh, get these lead services replaced, repaired. So it's been a top priority. We've been throwing money at it for years. Infrastructure's been a top priority for years. We replaced the water plant. We've got a plan to continue to fix that. We've got wastewater going. We've got roads going. We throw a lot of money at it. And we will continue to throw a lot of money at it. So it's, it's always a priority. As these mandates have changed, that, maybe some of the confusion, I mean, there's been some recent changes regarding the speed with which some of these things need to get replaced. And that's some of the recent change. But it's always been a priority. It will always be a priority.
Right. I, I live on Lee Street, and in 1962, the road was put in, and there hasn't been anything done to the pipes since then. I understand that. And that needs to be addressed as soon as possible.
Yeah. It's, Lee Street's coming up, 2023?
2023.
Yeah, coming up, so.
Okay. I'd just like to point out that there are six women on Lee Street that had ovarian cancer, and two of them have survived. Some of us are still fighting it, and one is, did not win. And I'm just saying, if lead isn't a priority, and our drinking water isn't a priority, we need to relook at things. I don't know what the rest of the city is spending their money. And I'm saying, because I don't know.
Did I, did I say that drinking water was not a priority?
No.
I'm, I'm, all of a sudden getting, getting confused.
You didn't.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
No, you did not. But I was at a meeting before, and you're like, they're making us do this. And I'm like, I understand they're making us do this, but that should have been a priority, and no one should have to make us do that, is what I'm trying to say.
And part of what, what he referenced, and I just referenced a second ago, some of those things have, you know, changed through years as technologies has come to light. You know, oh, now we've realized, you know, back in the day, that was, you know, the great idea. They've come to realize it wasn't. So we've had as a priority to get these things replaced. We've been working systematically on that. We've got a, you know, we have engineering reports that show streets, water, and kind of overlay the whole thing, and have an attack plan to get at all of it. So it's absolutely a priority. It will always be a priority.
And when he was saying, make it, absolutely want clean water, they're saying, fix this now. And he's, okay, but we don't have the money right now. So, and they're not.
But what are we using the other money for? Can we get the money? Do you know what I'm saying?
And that's where we're doing this. ARPA money is going to be part of that money to fill that gap.
It's, it's, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Got it.
Thank.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Very good.
Dave, total 116. I apologize for being the naysayer on this here. My background as a CFO is that whenever you're spending money, you're always making choices. And I think that doing something to solve the water is a very admirable thing that we should be looking to do. The question is, how do we fund it? And if you're looking to say, let's take the ARPA monies, where are you taking it away from? What's the trade-off? What's it being used for? Is it being used for road repairs? Is it being used for some other things that we're saying, we're not going to do here? And we're going to go ahead and put that to the water repair. Also, look back and say, well, how have we been paying for our water repairs in the past? And I can only speak to specifically is that when I bought our property in 2004, Clinton Street was being redone, and we moved in, and it was torn down about three foot, and the entire thing was repaired and replaced. And when I bought my property, I had a $5,000 lien, tax lien, on the property to pay for that repair of the water. So I specifically have picked out of my pocket and paid for that. That doesn't necessarily mean that I paid for all of it. I have no idea what the entire cost is there to do it. And I don't know if that can be put across the rest of the community here, too, is to say, if we need to do it, let's move forward and make the people pay the same way that I paid to have ours done there. It wasn't a choice. I bought the property partway through when it was being done. But there are mechanisms to do it. And you can't make a choice about saying, let's allocate money here unless you know where you're taking the money from. So you have to have both sides of the conversation before you say, yes, this is the best use for this money, because we don't have another solution for the water. You may or may not. And what's the alternative use?
Thanks for your comments. And historically, we have used special assessments. However, they changed the rules on us with this.
Yes, yes, actually, with the Safe Water, the Amendment to the Safe Water Drinking Act, we cannot actually charge people for replacing their services. Just a little recap, and I always state this before, we have never exceeded an MCL max contaminant violation. This changes to the lead services are based, not based on analytical process at all, it's just that lead. Meaning, actually, we have never exceeded the lead, but other communities have. For example, Baton Harbor, I can see them replacing a certain percentage. For arbitrarily them passing something across a whole state, no matter, not based on science, but just based on, just based on lead is there, I, I just don't think that's a wise decision that was made. But these are the rules. This is the law that was passed, and I'm enforcing that law.
No, sounds good, and we appreciate it. All right. Can't, sorry, you've been up once. Sorry. All right, anybody else? All right, let's go ahead. We've got a, we need a motion. There we go.
I'll make a motion for City Council to contribute a portion of the city's ARPA funds to the South Haven Area Water Superior Authority to replace lead services in the Shawza area.
Do you need a dollar amount of 160, 156?
It's 100, 160,000, 156, and 25 cents.
To the amount of 160,000, 156 dollars and 21 cents, 25 cents.
All right, bad writing.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion. We've got a second to dedicate those ARPA funds. As discussed, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Get it going. Thanks again, Bill, for all of that work. It's a ton of work. Next, City Council, receive an update from our police chief, Natalie Thompson, who's got some tough shoes to fill with those two officers. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. So tonight, I've been asked to provide just a brief update on some of the weather-related crashes that we had back on Wednesday, January 5, and Thursday, January 6. For the two days, it's our day and night shift. The police department responded to a total of 21 crashes. Several of these were slide-offs, where one vehicle left the roadway, either got stuck, or struck an object, or another vehicle. Three of the crashes we handled involved semi-tractors on I-196, either jackknifing or losing control and running off the roadway. These incidents are all very time-consuming. They're very unsafe for everybody. The average length of time officers spent on the highway was between one to four hours for each of these incidents. A lot, a lot of that involves waiting for tow trucks, and officers provide safety for the vehicles that are either off the road or partially in the roadway, to keep them from getting hit from another vehicle. One of the crashes we handled involved four officers for approximately three hours. With the crashes occurring on the highway, it was necessary to close lanes of traffic to allow tow vehicles' safety. Luckily, no injuries were reported, and no emergency vehicles were struck. On Wednesday, the 6th, on I-94, there were two state police vehicles struck while they were assisting motorists in dealing with these types of crashes. All of the crashes that we responded to over those two days were the result of individuals driving too fast, where conditions, they're either following too close behind someone, or they slam on their brakes and lose control of their vehicle. So in adding up the hours that the department spent for the two days, our day shift officers, there were three of them working, they spent 13 hours on these crashes. And then our night shift also has three officers assigned for the two nights. They spent 12 hours. So again, when we have bad weather, it's really important for people just to slow down.
And move over when there's a police officer on the side of the road. People do not know that rule still. I almost got rear-ended driving home this weekend from cars wanting to get past me while I was getting over for a police car.
And the laws requiring, the move over law, it's not only police vehicles, it's ambulances, fire trucks. It does include tow trucks, utility trucks. So it is important, if you can, if you can't move all the way over, at least, slow down.
Yeah. Or both. What a concept. So, very good. Any questions for the chief? Nothing? Thank you, as always, for keeping us safe.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. So if we have not discussed it already, you are welcome to come on up and state your name, state your address. You have up to five minutes. Oh, here's a finger in your face. Good evening, good evening.
How are you, sir?
Good evening.
My name is Joe Ashen, 270 Baseline Road, South Haven. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and his new City Council. I'll tell you why I'm here. I was under the impression that this evening, they were going to continue on an issue that came up in the Planning Commission last week. So I booked this time to come here, and since I was here, I figured I'd speak. Next door to me, I, next door to my property on Baseline Road, there's a development called Harbor, Harbor, Harbor Village or something. I think that's what it's called currently now. And it's a development with, I think they have 60 homes in there now. I think they're going to build 80. And they've changed their, they had, under their PUD, they were able to put a swimming pool and a parking lot in the middle of their development. They decided they'd rather have it alongside my property line. Okay? So what they want to do is put their swimming pool and parking lot and bathhouse right next to my property, which, of course, I'm against. And I, I have some concerns about that with a parking lot there and a pool, parties, noise, car alarms, et cetera, et cetera. And also, it came up in the meeting that the developer of that property was supposed to maintain an 80% opacity between my property and their property, which, it came up by one of the Planning Commission members, that they asked, well, whose side of the line are all the shrubbery on? Turns out, it's on my side of the line. And there's not 80% opacity. And I've been trying to get the developer to put in a fence for quite some time. The other thing that came up was that they surveyed the property line, because there was an issue about the location of the street called Ravine Lane, which runs along the east boundary of my property and the west boundary of the Harbor property. And we were supposed to determine whether that actual, that actual road is up to, up to code, that actually, because it seems like it's much closer to my property. I've been told by a contractor who said, I think this road is over the prop, too close to your property. That's not the issue I'm here about tonight. What I, what I'm concerned about are three things. The noise, the possibility of, and I have a reason to believe that the ground there could be somewhat environmentally unsafe, and, which I've been led to believe by certain things I've heard and read and been told. And that I would request the developer, if they're going to do anything, to do an environmental, a phase one, or whatever it's called, or phase two, I'm not too familiar with that, and, and build an eight-foot-high fence with some type of soundproofing. Now, I looked around the city, and I have pictures of eight-feet-high fences built between parking lots and residences. And one is right on North Shore Drive, next to the Packard Park, that little park a block down from Dykman, a block north. There's a small park there, and there's a house next door, which happened to be Michigan Beach Hotel back in the 60s. And there's an eight-foot fence, and I brought a picture if you'd like to see it. And I would like an eight-foot fence along the length of my property and the Harbor Development, for several reasons. One is the noise, one is visual. The other problem I have is people continuously coming on my property from that development, who think they're in the country, and they walk anywhere they want, and they wander around on my property and damage trees. And I even found where somebody built a campfire.
Got one minute.
One minute?
One minute.
One minute. What can we do in one minute? Okay. Any questions?
I'm sure staff has them, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Well, then, I was hoping that maybe when we come back to this next week, when will the, when will the planning, when will, when will this come up in the City Council to discuss this?
It's peace right now.
At this time, we're thinking it'll come before City Council for the first time on the 7th of February.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening, Annie Brown. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Annie Brown, 114 Michigan Avenue. And I'm just here to let you know that I'm running for State Representative, which you probably saw in the newspaper. For people who don't know, I've lived in South Haven for 35 years, and I served on our South Haven School Board for 13 years. The issues that I am going to be campaigning on are funding for shoreline cities facing bluff erosion and high water damage, increasing affordable housing, and expanding mental health care. And one thing I really feel strongly about is legislators who show up when the chips are down and the water levels are high. And the challenges that I mentioned are challenges that are faced by every city up and down the shoreline in our new house district, which stretches from Sagatuck down to New Buffalo and the state line. So, but I also want to hear from other people about what issues are important to everybody in South Haven and the South Haven area, and what their concerns and priorities are, too. So thank you for this opportunity, and thanks for everything you do.
Hey, thanks. And congratulations on running. So, the other one, just be ready to talk about is, do you favor local control over short-term mental regulation?
Right.
Just ponder that.
I will.
It might come up. Anybody else?
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I want to thank Griffin for sending a letter to Matt O'Connell about the parking for duplexes. I can't believe we actually got that through, that it, that they can only, they have to have the same number of parking spaces for duplex as they have to for a single-family house. Amen. Now, I still like to complain about getting information on Trailside. Received a letter from City's Attorney today that said, here's some of the answers to our questions, and the case is closed. Now, it sounds like we'll be able to see the new site plan for Phase Two, to look at it without going through FOIA. If we have to go through FOIA, it's, it's useless, because we'll never get information. We've got seven findings that, that the developer has to take care of, and three clarifications, and also the clarification addition for the parking on the duplexes. And we'd like to be able to monitor that on a timely basis. If we have to go through FOIA to monitor this, it's not going to work, and the developer's going to do what the heck he wants. It's going to go through plan review. We've got to be able to see when the plans go in, what the site plan looks like, and what they're going to do about the heights of the buildings and everything, and who's going to make any comments about what. Because I'm the president of Trailside Phase One, and not only the residents in Trailside Phase One, but the entire neighborhood, who are, some of them are here, are very upset about what happened on, on Elkenburg, about these 35-foot houses. I know the ordinance says you can build a 35-foot house, and the developer doesn't care. But he, he said in his letter, again, to, to Brad, back in September of 2020, that he's going to build houses the same as what's in Trailside right now. And he didn't. The highest house that True North built in Trailside is 26 feet. They're building 39-feet houses. Now, the ordinance says they can build a 35, but with the, the Birm thing, they can go up to 39. So we've got to be able to stop this somehow. And we, we want to be able to monitor this. I'm not asking the city to do everything. I realize that Kate, everybody's busy. But we need to get this information on a timely basis. If we have to go through FOIA, it's not going to happen, and the developers can do what the heck he wants. It's got to be timely. I'm the president of the HOA, and people are asking me questions, and I don't have any answers. And we, and I have to, I have to work with these guys, because they still are on the board for the HOA. I can't go over to them and say, you guys are a bunch, you know what, because they still have votes. They still have votes on those four lots. Those four lots haven't closed. Now, we have controlling voting on it, but they can still, you know, hold back on things that they still have to do until we take complete control. So we've got to be able to receive the information on a timely basis without burdening the city, you know, to do it. But I would think as soon as the planning, planning review people get the information, they ought to notify us to let us know, so we can at least monitor what's going on. Because the developer has, have you heard before, a lot of things I've been talking about. he's put a lot of things through there that really made people in, in, in Trailside and the neighborhood very upset, and we want to prevent that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. Along those same lines with Trailside, you, I have informed you guys how often we've had to try to follow up to address the contaminated soil and the proper handling of it and maintaining it off-site. When the destruction of the designated open space first happened and the exposed soil occurred, and I approached the city, they said they didn't have the due care plan, that they approached the, that they spoke with the developer, and the developer said it was okay. He was in compliance. But if I was concerned, I could go talk with Eagle. And I had already started that in discussions with Eagle. When I explained to the Eagle person what was going on, she was very alarmed. And she said, okay, I need to talk with the developer. And the next day fencing was delivered to secure the area where the exposed contaminated soil existed. Following that, once they finally started building and all that land, the soil that they excavated and dumped on another parcel of their property was there, it's supposed to be covered and contained. It was not covered very often. The covers would completely fall off, and the developer was completely non-responsive to Eagle. The gate was not locked. On July 4th, Friday of that weekend, I was on the phone to get the fencing fixed around that open lot of contaminated soil because it's along the mixed-use trail. So by not complying, the developer was able to minimize expenses, not because of what the city did, but because of what I did. To avoid this, when a PUD is allowed and an amendment is allowed, a restriction that should be placed on that is providing the due care plan and making it publicly open. We should not have to file a FOIA request for it. We should know what our exposure is to these contaminated soils, and it applies to Trailside. It will apply to Overton. It will apply to any development with contaminated soil. And that should be the city's right to do that. These are discoverable documents. They're not private. They should be readily available, and they should be made readily available. I'm tired of barriers being put up when citizens are purely trying to protect the safety of our families, our children, our environment. Second of all, so that was my biggest issue. My other concern is I would request that the city council please instruct staff to date and author their staff reports for each agenda package. Often it just says staff report. There's no staff name associated with it. If a date is provided, it's the date of the meeting. I find that unhelpful because we do not know when that staff report was finalized, which would then allow us to know what has been received subsequent to that finalization of the staff report and what would or would not have been considered in that staff report, and what needs to be vetted more further before any decision is made. Those are pretty simple. I think those should be standard operating procedures, part of the best practice of this city, especially if we're development-ready certified. These are pretty minor obligations. And I don't think that they would violate any, any law, or I don't even think they're required, but I think they would be something simple that the city would do in transparency. Along with that, with the Overton coming up before the Planning Commission, we have been asking for comps. The consultant, Kilpatrick, said he would provide comps when he was here back last year. Nothing has been provided to us. It could easily be uploaded onto the Overton site. Habitat had said they would provide information, but all they've provided is information on high-end developments
You've got one minute, Ms. Tish.
on the east side of the state. They did have one development in Ohio, but they didn't provide any parking ratios. We need that information to have objective decisions. Griffin Graham recently indicated that there was someplace in Holland, but I don't know what that address is. He had previously provided to me in May, two locations, one in Grand Haven, which is right downtown in a business district for high-end condos with no parking ratio. That's not comparable. Another one in Niles for a, a high, an independent senior apartment complex. Again, no parking ratios were given, and that's in an industrial area. There's an auto shop across the street, an open park across one other street, a church across the other street. I want comparable comparisons, but I'm not sure that's even possible because in the letter providing those, it said that there aren't such comparables. Thank you.
Thanks. Joe, run quick. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Nice shoes. Those are fancy.
You're trying to butter me up. 811 Indiana Street, Joe Wilkins. One comment and one question, I believe. First, I want to pause, I'll take a moment to acknowledge the legacy and the work and contribution that Dr. King made to this country, especially in a way of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I don't know if the board will acknowledge it, but if you do, it's a missed on goal because he did a great, a lot of great things for a lot of people in this country. He fought for mankind in general. But with that being said, Mr. Reeser and Councilman Sleeper mentioned about being proactive. I only wish that the council would be proactive on other issues that's important to the residents in this community. I say that in regards to the STR issue. We start, and affordable housing, that was on your, I believe, your goals for the last couple of years. We started meeting about affordable housing in the missing middle, at least four years now, if my memory serves me right. And we still haven't got any closure in regards to bringing affordable housing. That's very disturbing when you can look in at the south side of Ward 1, an area that I grew up raised in and where at one time that property was redlined. And now you see homes going up, big old, big old homes going up for, if, if, I haven't been able to confirm this number, for at least 800, 800,000 homes going up on Elkenberg, I was told. I know at least four, but some say the last couple of ones that are huge are going for about 800. That's very disturbing when they're, we're pricing the missing middle right out. So not only are we selling the character or the soul of this city, but we're letting STR do the same thing. So it is a big problem, and it all lies in the lap of this council. This council have had this issue with STR, and you've had the issue with affordable housing for at least two to three years. Faces have pretty much been the same. So it's going to fall in your lap in how this city turns out with STR and affordable housing. We do know, and it's facts, it's on the record, what STR has done to a lot of cities. So you talk about, let's be proactive, but to me, we're missing the boat. So I'm hoping that the council will take it more serious in 2022 to try to stop the bleeding with STR and bring affordable housing because that report, it was so misleading. And I know it was on the agenda, so I'm not going to say. It was misleading because STR have damaged this community, the character of this community, and so many other ways. Last comment, or question. The STR program, when it was rolled out, was supposed to be self-funding. A couple of years ago, we found out that it was in the red. That money was taken from another fund. And it was supposed to come back. You guys were supposed to come back, the council city managers, the city was supposed to come back and tell us what they were going to do to try to recoup that money as of right now. That's a, a, an open item from 2021 that hasn't been addressed. Is the council prepared tonight to give us some feedback on how the, the city went about recouping that money?
I don't, do we have that?
As I mentioned, I will be, be, feel, excuse me, I'll be bringing the revenues back in February so we can talk about that and see that those, but I'm not prepared to discuss it tonight.
Okay, sounds good.
Next month?
Next month?
Next month.
So it'll be the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Well, next month, whatever. So, coming up.
Coming up on the?
Yep, February.
February? 7th. Okay. Fine, thank you.
Very good. And I guess I'll just comment quickly. Housing, as you've already heard, I mean, it's, it's kind of the blessing and the curse here. We're, on one side, we're going too fast. On the other side, we're going too slow. But we continue to work on Overton. That will continue to move ahead. So it will be done. So, all right, anybody else?
Dave Blackwood, 747 Lee Street. And I would just like to extend an invitation to all of you to go from Hillsworth to Francis on Lee Street. They put two entire trailer loads of hot patch in over 20 holes. Most of them were six to eight inches deep. You said 2023 possibly.
I think it's too done.
I read in the paper, 2011, you were going to redo that street again in 2023.
I didn't hear that one. I heard 2023.
In 2016, I read in the paper, you were going to redo that street. How many streets that cater to out-of-town guests and other people have been done in that time where our little street has been overlooked? 30 years of paying my taxes every year, and every year, three to four times in a half a block, they continue to put that much hot patch, which goes onto my vehicles, cost me to have removal. So when you say possibly 2023, all I think of is 2011. That was how long ago. Thank you.
You got, the street list I have has 2023.
If any of you would drive that stretch of road, I would appreciate it because today is when they put it in. You can see where all the holes are at.
It needs to get done. I agree. You got it. Thank you. All right. I thought someone else was coming up. Are we done? I think I've heard from everybody. All right, we're good. Okay, let's go on to city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I did also want to acknowledge that today is the observation of Martin Luther King Day. This is a day that we can all reflect on the things that he stood for and what we're all doing to carry out that message. So I did want to acknowledge that. I also wanted to share my congratulations to Officers Bell and Only for their successful careers here in South Haven, and we wish them the best in their retirement. There will be a press release coming out this week that itemizes some of our new staff members that will be, being added over the next couple of weeks. We have now added a new full-time code enforcement officer, Rick Loper, who started today. We've also added a new full-time code enforcement slash STR coordinator, Kelly Tungate. She started today as well. Mr. Ron Dotson, who gave us many, many years of service, if not decades. When he retired, we were having a hard time to have one person do all the jobs that Ron did. So we split up his job description. Now we have a parks superintendent, so Aaron Preed. If many of you should know him, he was our, our arborist. He is now a parks superintendent. And we have now recently hired Quentin Clark as our waters, sewer, and street superintendent. So we are making those new hires and getting them backfilled, getting people up to speed. So you'll see some new faces in the building department. You know, you've already received two officers here to the South Haven Police Department, Mr. Ronald Richmond and Eric Garcia Marillo. We should be hiring a third person who will be coming here to city council for their oath of office. So we've got some changes coming and some, some jobs to be filled. We're not done yet. And those are my, my comments. I would add, I would, I would reiterate what Chief Thompson said. It's, it's that time of year. It's time to slow down, folks.
Amen to that. Okay, very good. Questions for Kate? Nothing. City council comments. I'll start at my left. Good evening, Ms. Tish.
Well, first I would like to say congratulations to the recent retire, retired, what is it? Officer Bell and Officer Only for their, I believe it was 25-plus years to the community. So again, congratulations to them on a job well done. I also wanted to, just to remember that this is Martin Luther King's birthday, and we, I would like to just commemorate his legacy by reading one of his quotes. And it says, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." And I just, it, it stuck with me because we want to remember as a council that we don't want to forget the things that matter to our community, which is South Haven. And when I say that, it's to all the citizens, you know, and I heard a lot of different things said tonight, and I take it to heart, and I try to do my very best. And I think, you know, everyone here tries to do their very best to remember what you guys are saying. And every voice is very important to each and every one of us. Although we can't please everyone, we do, I believe that we do try our very hardest to do that. And so I'm not going to be silent, and I don't think anyone up here is going to be silent in the things that are important to each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ditto her remarks regarding the officer's retirements. I'm sure they're looking forward to that and Martin Luther King Day. Possibly just a clarification. I want to make sure everybody understands that just because we're replacing lead water service pipes doesn't mean the quality of our drinking water is lower. The quality of our drinking water is fine and it's great, and it's tested very often. So I thought maybe there was a little confusion there. And as far as the funds that, that we voted for tonight, that's a priority we're taking so that even though we have clean water at the moment, we want to make sure it stays clean. And that's why I voted for allocating those funds. So I don't know if that helps any of the confusion or not, but that's all I have.
Very good. Mr. Arnold?
Yeah, this being Dr., the, the day that we celebrate Dr. King, I'm always reminded, and I, I probably say this every year, my favorite quote of his. Dr. King said that not everyone can be, or not everyone can be famous, but everyone can be great because greatness is determined by the service that you give to society. And that's kind of why we're all here, is giving our service. And, and we know Dr. King certainly did give service to this community.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome to the side. Come on around.
I just wanted to thank everyone for their comments today. And like Letitia said, we do take it to heart and try to do what's best for the people that we serve here, and always keep that in mind. And also acknowledge Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. It's an important day for all of us to try to be our best and make sure that we do have a diverse and very caring community, that we try to lift everyone up in some way. And I also agree with what was said about the gentrification of certain parts of our town, and maybe that's something that we can keep an eye on. I had looked up before that there are ways that the city can prevent gentrification from pushing up prices in specific areas of their towns to kind of protect those houses. So I think something like that could be really useful for our town. And that's all I have.
Thank you. George?
Just along the same lines of remembering Dr. Martin Luther King, I think one of the things that, that I feel is important is a diverse community is a strong community. And the more we can bring the value of everyone in our community up, the better off we as, as a community overall are going to be. So that's it.
All stated. Thank you.
Since I've been on city council, I think the most frustrating part for me, and the part that's the biggest challenge, is one word, expediency. It just feels like everything takes longer than it should. Since everyone's tying in with Martin Luther King, and I'm sorry, I don't have anything memorized, but I will say during civil rights, I remember seeing his history and Johnson's history. And I remember seeing how he kept pushing President Johnson, and Johnson kept saying, just slow down, slow down. And he wouldn't slow down. So tonight, when we talked about short-term rentals and we talked about affordable housing, I remember meeting Kate, Michelle on finance, and Griffin about the money that's owed the city. And not only did I push it, and not only did it get pushed back for seven, eight months now, I remember Kate said one thing that was important, and she said, we're at a tipping point. And that's what her exact words, and I think we are. We're either going to fix this short-term rental issue and get a balance and fix the density. And if we don't, I'm afraid we're going to continue to see our year-round population drop. And I think tonight we heard that people, if nothing else, want to be listened to. Whatever conclusion we want to draw from short-term rentals, at least we conclusion we want to draw from short-term rentals, at least we have to hear what the residents in this town that live here and vote what they want. I can't speak for them, but I can say we should listen, and we have to do that, and we can't kick the bucket down the street anymore. We have to do something. And if we don't, as Kate said, the tipping point, we're going to tip the wrong way, and we're going to become a tourist town with some year-round residents instead of year-round residents with tourism. We've got to make our mind up which one we want to be. So, I'm hoping we at City Council can push this and get something resolved, so the residents that live here are satisfied and that we're representing their wishes. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. I, too, would just like to obviously acknowledge, you know, the work of Dr. Martin Luther King, and, I mean, we continue to, to push, to try to do things here as a city, and we will continue to push. We have work to do. We will always have work to do, so you have, our commitment as a council, we will continue to do that. Again, Officer Bell, Officer Only will be missed greatly. Two just amazing people. I kid you not, Antoine tried to teach my kids square dancing. That was true story. Did not make that up. I will miss them at sporting events, football ga, I mean, they'll be there now, but just, you know, when, when we saw them and to see these students approaching them at any given time was quite refreshing, just to acknowledge their presence. It was really nice to see. So, and yeah, and again, always, we, we're always listening, we're always taking feedback as we look at priority setting. I mean, there, there are a lot of issues, and I, and I would challenge this group, year-round residency, there, there are a lot of factors, and we, we talked about one of them, but there's a lot of factors we have to talk about. So, so it's, it's, it's not simple. So, there's, there's going to be a lot of work we have to do. We have to figure out other ways to attract people. So, there's, there's, there's work to be done. It's, it's, it's easy to kind of throw one dart at it, but it's going to take a lot of work, and I'm willing to do that work. So, on that note, I hope everyone has a warm, safe night. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and I'll see you commotion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post no, we adjourn. Have a good night.